So good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock P M. And I would like to call this meeting to order today, Tuesday, November four, twenty twenty five at seven P M. I'll start with number one, call to order, followed by the pledge allegiance. Okay, and Joseph?
Present.
Valerie?
Hey, I'm here.
Jenny?
Present.
Danielle? Danielle?
Present.
Okay, that will give us full quorum. Valerie, can you help me lead in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to item number two, review of the agenda. Mayor Council review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Valerie, can you give it a read through, please?
Yes, the agenda for the legislative meeting of the mayor and city council, city of Mount Rainier, Maryland. This is a virtual meeting, Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty five at seven P M. One, call of order, uh, call to order, pledge of allegiance. Two, review of agenda, the mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, mayor and council member event announcements. Number four, city manager's report, city manager Karish Kamali will present his report to the mayor and council. Number five, presentation of the building application for four two two one thirty first street, Mount Rainier, Maryland. The mayor and council will receive a presentation from the owner of four two two one thirty first street, Mount Rainier, Maryland. Number six, public comment, please see page four of the agenda where the rules for public comments are listed. If you wish to speak, please advise during the virtual meeting. Um, old business, second reading and adoption of ordinance number zero four dash twenty twenty five, ten minutes. The mayor and council will have a second reading and adoption of ordinance number zero four dash twenty twenty five, repealing the police review and advisory board. Number eight, uh, second reading and adoption of resolution number zero seven dash twenty twenty five, ten minutes. The mayor and council will have the second reading and adoption of resolution number zero seven dash twenty twenty five, upcoming vice mayor rotation. Number nine, second reading of and adoption of resolution number zero nine dash twenty twenty five. The mayor and council will have the second reading and adoption of resolution of zero nine dash twenty twenty five, F Y twenty seven budget calendar. Number ten, proclamation for municipal government works month, ten minutes. Mayor Selena Benitez will issue a proclamation for municipal government works month. Number eleven, vote on approval of minutes, five minutes, the mayor and council will vote on approving the minutes for September sixteenth, twenty twenty five work session, October seventh, twenty twenty five legislative meeting. New business, twelve, the first reading of ordinance, uh, number zero five dash twenty twenty five. The mayor and council will have the first reading of ordinance number zero five dash twenty twenty five in ordinance codifying the, uh, Mount Rainier Green Team and disbanding the Mount Rainier Environment Protection Board. Number thirteen, pro- uh, proclamation for Human Rights Day, ten minutes. Mayor Selena will, Benitez will issue a proclamation for Human Rights Day on December tenth. Number fourteen, presentation of minutes, the city clerk will present the October twenty one, twenty twenty five work session minutes to the mayor and council. And number fifteen, adjournment.
Thank you so much, Valerie. All right, so the agenda has been reviewed. Is there any items that you wish to add or delete? There are topics of interest or discussion?
Mayor, I would like to remove number eight, the vice mayor vegetation from this agenda.
Thank you, Valerie. Valerie has put in the table removal item number eight. Uh, the resolution on vice mayor rotation. Okay, I'm gonna go one by one, because I don't wanna hear arguments later. Okay, I'm gonna go with, uh, Jenny, uh, Danielle, Joseph.
Um, am I supposed to vote on that or just discuss it?
Your thoughts on it?
Um, I, I think, um, Valerie probably has good reasons for wanting to table it and, um, I'm happy to, um, go ahead with tabling it, though I, I would like for the council to have a discussion about, um, the request to table. If not now, then at some future point.
Thank you, Jenny. Uh, Danielle, Joseph?
Um, I vote no.
Okay, can you please, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Can you say clearly, please?
I vote no.
Uh, we're not voting, but okay, noted. Uh, Joseph?
Um, I, given the current circumstances, um, and I do trust, uh, council member with all his judgment. I do think it makes sense to table it for the time being. I'm hoping that, um, whatever is, um, leading the disc will be resolved soon and we can have a proper discussion. Um, but I, 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 I do think it's, we should wait.
Okay, having everybody had a chance to speak at this point, I'm gonna ask for a motion to be put on the floor.
Move to remove the, uh, number eight from the agenda for tonight.
Um, is there a second?
One second.
Okay, so probably move in second, um, any discussion above it? Okay, I am hearing none. I'm gonna repeat that again, I'm hearing none request for discussion, so we're gonna move for a vote. Okay, uh, Valerie?
I.
Jenny?
I.
Joseph?
I.
Danielle?
Nay.
And I'm gonna vote yes, so the motion carries four, one, zero. Okay? So, um, Melissa, who's our city clerk, uh, can you please remove number eight from the agenda and mark the vote on it? Okay, is there any other item on the agenda you guys wish to, um, delete or add? Please advise. If it's none, you guys could say none and we could move forward. We're a nail, nothing? Valerie, good? Jenny?
None.
Okay, Joseph?
None.
Danielle?
None.
Okay, none items to be added or move beyond this one. All right, so we have a working agenda. All right, with number eight being removed. All right, moving on to item number three, mayor council members events and announcement. And it has been a very busy two weeks, and it's only gonna get busy, everyone. So I'm gonna go around the room, give us anything that you guys have, and, um, I look forward to hearing it. All right, uh, Joseph, I'm gonna start with you.
I just wanted to make sure folks are aware that the three commissions meeting, uh, that was scheduled for November the, fourth, sixth, this Thursday, November the sixth, just moved to November.
November the, the sixth, today is the fourth.
Yes, so it's moved to November.
Selection day. Okay. All right, thank you, Joseph, and you guys can find that information out at the, uh, the calendar, uh, for the city of Mount Rainier as well, okay?
Okay.
So, if anything, please refer to the calendar. Jenny, Valerie, Danielle?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. Uh, Valerie?
Yeah, thank you, um. Recreation Committee meets on November thirteenth, uh, Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day is on, uh, November fourteenth. Um, I believe it's being, uh, celebrated at both schools, um, this coming year. Um, uh, and then the Sweaty Sweater Run is December sixth, um, and those are my events to update you with. Thank you.
And, um, can you also talk about the, Low Road, I think it's called? I'm sorry, I mistake if I said it wrong.
Um, yes, uh, so last weekend, um, October s- twenty sixth, um, we hosted or, um, Mayor Benitez ma- met up with a bunch of people doing a Slow Roll Sunday. Um, this was an event hosted with Chalk Riot and Aerobicycle, um, where they rode from Chalk Riot Studios, um, above the post office up to, um, Riverdale Park and then back down to Memorial Park where Mayor Benitez met the crowd. Um, we had about twenty-two people and the, um, event was featured in the Diamondback, um, newspaper and, uh, the University of Maryland, so. Um, it was a successful event and we continued to push for, uh, bringing the trail further into Mount Rainier, Brentwood and North Brentwood. Um, and that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, and thank you for making sure that continues to be pushed, because I know it's one of the things that we wanna prioritize this year, who are prioritizing this year. Danielle?
Yes, um, the cert meeting this month will be November seventeenth at the Police Department Community Room at seven thirty P M. Also, the Mount Rainier Cert is sponsoring a Narcan training, which will happen on November eighth from ten A M till noon for sixteen years and older residents. Um, if you would like to be a part of the Narcan training, please email them at M R C E R T, let's see, E R T, at googlegroups dot com. And if you need that email, you can feel free to email me and I'll be happy to get that to you.
Okay, if not, it should be on the city website, uh, as well. All right, Meli, can you go to the bottom of the agenda? All right, so we have Veterans Day, Flag Ceremony and Brunch on Tuesday, November eleventh, from ten A M to twelve P M at the Police Department Community Room, so you, if you are a veteran, um, come join us, we have wonderful breakfast. And it should be a great time, okay? Thanksgiving basket distribution will be on Tuesday the twenty-fifth, from twelve to five thirty P M at the Police Department Community Room. We are working in coronation as always with Thomas Stone, Mount Rainier Elementary, Cesar Chavez, uh, Rainier Manor one and two. Um, I will tell you that the lists are filling up very fast, a big thank you to, um, Ms. Valencia, Ms. Barrientos, as well as, um, Ms. Lily as well, and Ms. Number for, um, being great support to us and, and getting that information through and our whole entire team for putting this together. All right, so, um, Valerie, did talk about the sweaty, uh, fun run? Come and run or walk. I mean, I, I am happy to lead the walking group. Don't do the running part, um, but it's gonna start Memorial Park and it's at thirty-third Street and Perry Street. Breakfast and photo with Santa will be December thirteenth at ten A M to twelve P M, uh, with Mount Rainier Nature Center. At the Memorial Nature Center, how the basket distribution will be December eighteen from twelve to five thirty. Um, and the other thing is like the city is working and putting together, uh, resource list of the various food banks we have in the city. There are quite a few in order to inform our residents of where they could, um, grab, uh, food locally. The other thing is like we're finalizing, putting final touches on a research page for the city Mount Rainier webpage. So that way, um, you guys know what are the resources around the city in the city, but other, uh, programs that are also, uh, being offered by the state, the council and so on. As you guys heard, our government was more, um, uh, Maryland Snap, uh, recipients are gonna be funded for this month, so that's actually a bit of relief from all of us, but it's still very hard. And last but not least, Red their Open Studio is gonna be taking place this Sunday. Um, we look forward to joining and, uh, they're gonna have a lot of, um, wonderful activities. And for the next meeting, I'll give you guys the, um, the small marketplace, uh, that, uh, Joe's Movement Emporium also puts. So please shop local and you'll be able to help a lot of, um, uh, local artists. Uh, some of them are definitely, uh, fair employees as well that, um, are very artistic. And definitely this will be very, um, handy. I know there's other fundraisers are coming, we'll be sharing them with you guys in order to, um, give you feedback. Uh, the other thing I know, uh, Jenny, Joseph, Valerie and myself were at the unveiling of the mural on Bunker Hill. Big thank you to Chalk Riot, um, they made a beautiful mural. Uh, so we're very, very thankful for that, um, and it slows people down a little bit, which is always wonderful. So in saying that, we look forward to continued partnership. If you guys don't know, Chalk Riot is actually one of our local, uh, businesses and they do a lot of beautiful work. So, um, a few months ago, they did, um, temporary, uh, chalk one. And now this is permanent, so if you haven't seen it, stop by Bunker Hill. And you also get to admire the mural that is at, uh, Joe's Movement Emporium as well. So lots of arts and a lot of fun stuff, and we look forward to, um, see how we activate that space. I know it was very, uh, fun to have all of us on the street and, and having kids running around and playing safely. And as a heads up, um, you know, we are gonna have, uh, next year, the Neighborhood Design Center is gonna have another, um, another event in our wonderful city. I'm honored to be a part of the steering committee and, um, surrounded by a lot of wonderful people, so I would say thank you also to Neighborhood Design Center for helping us with the vision, Valerie for pushing. You know, making sure God deliver, Valerie, big shout out to you. All right, thank you so much for that, but in saying that, I think we have put a lot of time and effort when it comes to the art, so, um, thank you for everybody that showed up. We had, um, a lot of people being there, so it was a fun event. And last but not least, Dia de los Muertos was successful, um, we partnered with, uh, Joe's Movement Emporium. They had a scary, um, a scary house, um, I didn't went, I let the other younger kids enjoy the fear, um, and also to the, uh, nature center, um, Barbie, Latinas and Stems, the Dream Project, we all came together along with the city of Mount Rainier to, um, celebrate Doctor Ochoa, the first Latina astronaut. Uh, Barbie, but also talked to several women in STEM and the different fields that they, they have. So big thank yous to Sir Nella, who is part of Latinas and STEM, and to every single member that show up. And it was a beautiful, creative, artistic, very Mount Rainier-ish kind of event, so. Those are, um, my announcements for it, so thank you to all their partners to make this possible, because the reality is we couldn't do it without you, um, the cost is very expensive for most of these things that you guys put through and, and make it happen, you know, working together with us. All right, so those are the announcements and everything else. Let me move to the next one. So, our wonderful city manager, Mr. Kamali, will be giving his report to mayor and council in the community. Mr. Kamali, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, mayor. Good evening, mayor and council and everyone joining us tonight. I am here to provide you with, uh, full update on the city's day-to-day operations and the progress of our ongoing projects. This covers everything from, from the critical infrastructure improvements and our safest street initiatives to essential public safety and traffic enforcement measures. I would like to emphasize that most of our ongoing projects are funded through federal, state and the county grants. This grant's success is a direct testament to the hard work and dedication of our team. Also, this grant revenues are very helpful in maintaining the city's strong financial position. It allows us to continue upgrading our infrastructure, making our city safer, more walkable and bikeable while improving the overall quality of the life in our community. With that said, let's move to the detail of my report, and Melissa, could you please bring up my report? All right.
Up in the screen, Mr. Kamali, is this, is this it? Okay.
Yes.
So be an overview of this report and then it'll be posted on the, on the web pages, as everything else. All right, go ahead.
So usually, usually, uh, my week is like this, that we have a weekly meeting with the team, uh, with the department heads to receive the updates and resolve any issues that they may have. And this happens every week, and, uh, so this is part of my weekday. But we've been working very hard on the audit, so I have a good news for everybody on this call that the F Y twenty-five audit was completed on October twenty-nine. And for past two years, we have had two audits, one for the operating budget, the other one is for ARPA funding. And I do appreciate the team that we were able to make it on October twenty-nine. And the report was submitted, the complete audit of both was, uh, submitted to the Maryland Office of Legislative Audits and we got the confirmation. And the due date was October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Just wanna, you know, remind everyone on this call that this is my six audits since I took over the city manager position in F Y, uh, in August second, twenty twenty-one. The city was behind F Y twenty and twenty-one. And I had to do F Y twenty-two on that year, so I completed three audits in one year in only four, five months. And then we stay on the right track, F Y twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five. It's not me, it's the team and I appreciate everyone on, you know, helping me to get there. That's for the audit and, uh, the next big project that the city we have, and I'm working on it for past two years, it's the Pots Hall. Pots Hall, as you know that we started the construction in March twenty-two, and now we are in twenty-five. And, uh, the problem is, once you wanna connect one building to another building, you know, that's something that is just, uh, repair and, uh, it involves a lot of work. It's not like, you know, y- you have a bare land and you wanna build a house. So definitely it's gonna take some time. This is a seven million dollars project. And I just had, I just wanna let you know that today at four o'clock, I talked, I talked to the county in Inspector Brown, and he promised me that there are some documents that we have to render to him, which is, which we're gonna get it by next Monday, hopefully. Because there is a problem with the city's sprinkler system, old building, and we had that one inspected. And the county wanted us to make sure that system also is working. So this, this week, Thursday or Friday, I have the contractor to come and resolve the issue. And then we have to put the package together, send it to Mr. Brown, and he promised me if I give him everything, it's gonna take him twenty-four hours to give me the U N O. So finger crossed, hopefully in next two weeks, I will have everything squared away and I'll be able to move to the City Hall building. And, uh, that's for, you know, the Pots Hall. And as you see, I listed, you know, we, we finished the final inspection in October seventh, then we send everything, we started the process of U N O, because you have to do that. You, you need to render all the documents, all the drawings has to be sealed by a professional engineer, so right now we're gathering all this information. And last but not least, if you look at, at the last bullet that we have, Joseph, we got the gold lead for the building. That was another achievement that we got this one and we were just notified last week. And we're trying to get to the platinum next year, hopefully. So right now we got almost, you know, seventy-nine points, that's how you get the, the gold, and, uh, hopefully we make it, make it, uh, to the next one. So that's for the Pots Hall. Then I'm gonna talk to you guys about two major projects and two major grant that we have had so far. One of them is the ARPA funding, and, uh, so the, our part of the city receives five point four million in twenty-one. And then from there, we started so many projects, as you all know that. The last two project that I have to complete, it's Newton Street and Home Prepare or Home Improvement Project. Newton Street, we are on the right track, we finished the phase one, and we're working on phase two. Phase two, it's easier than phase one, because phase one, we had to lay down almost three hundred feet, twenty-four inch reinforced concrete pipe and connect the storm drain and take care of some of the drainage issue on Newton Street. The rest is gonna be sidewalk repairs, and we finished the bio-retentions, three bio-retentions last week. And right now, this morning, I was visiting the site, they're working on the sidewalk and curb and gutter, so hopefully, I'm, I'm hoping by end of this month, we're gonna be done with that project. And, uh, so this is regarding the Newton Street. And, um, the next one that is ARPA project is gonna be home improvement or home repair, which we put hundred fifty, but unfortunately, we got only applications up to hundred fourteen thousand dollars. And there is only one applicant that has the contractor to work on that project, and I am hoping that that should be done very soon. Cause I was talking to Melissa yesterday and she told me that the contractor is working on that project, so hopefully that should be done. Once we do that, we just have to do the annual report, which is due by April first, twenty twenty-six. And thank God, so far we have maintained and staying compliance with the Treasury Department. Melissa, could you go to the next one? So I'm, I'm just gonna, you know, speed up a little bit, because I don't wanna.
Yeah, Mr. Kamali, just like, big picture view, you don't have to go into word by word.
Okay, all right. All right, next one is the S S four A, safest street and roads for all, you know it, I don't have to explain anything about that. We started, the first project was high visibility crosswalks, and we did that, and you see the information is there. And, uh, after that, we started the sidewalk maintenance. Sidewalk maintenance right now is going on, I'm sorry about some, some issue last week, but today I checked, they're on the right track and they're putting the flexi, and very soon we're gonna, you know, catch up. And, um, last but not least, in this one, S S four A is a stop sign. I know you all waiting for this, that's why I gave you a lot of information for you to read it and just, you know, see that I am on it and we're gonna get it done. So a stop sign, it has to be approved by the federal highway. I cannot just go through the process. I have to get the approval in order for the city to get the reimbursement. So far, I have a good, you know, sense that we're gonna get it, and I just communicated with them, but I'm waiting for them to give me the final approval and we're gonna move forward. Melissa, next, please. All right, so S S four A, before, before I forget, there are four projects of S S A in the final design, which is the Levy Crossing, thirty-five, fifth and thirty-sixth and Bunker Hill and thirty-first and Foot Forest. And they are at eighty, ninety percent design, we're expecting, hopefully, we're gonna get it in November and December. By the time I get it, I'm gonna go ahead and put it out for the bid and get my contractors on board and then wait for the good weather in the spring, hopefully, May, April or Ju- or March, you know, to start those projects. The rest of the project, total design is working on it, especially two major project, which is Safe Route to School, which is the, you know, elementary, Mount Rainier Elementary School and Thomas Stone. So we're gonna get that one, you know, going soon. After S S four, we get to another grant that we have in this project, which is the Green Street Project that is funded by state for five hundred thirty thousand dollars. We finished the phase one, and then we went to phase two, we had a community conversation on September sixth. And the council, uh, member Joseph and Valerie attended that meeting. We got the feedback, we presented, you know, what is gonna happen, and everybody was on board with us. So right now, I'm waiting for the hundred, hundred percent design, and then we're gonna get the contractor. This project will happen again in the new year, so because of the winter time, we're, we're not gonna be able to do anything. After, after the Green Street Project, I have another big project we could, which is the solar panels. And, uh, that's one of the city's mission to reduce the carbon footprint and use the clean energy. So we got four hundred ten thousand dollars from the state. Uh, right now, we got, uh, code and thirty-five oh three building are in service. We are generating energy. Uh, Police Department and Public Works, we're waiting for the approval from Utility Company, which is Pepco in this case, and we should get it soon. Pots Hall, there was an issue because of the address and we're fixing that one and I will keep you guys posted. After this, I just wanna give you another good project that I worked on it. Which was about three thousand square foot of road repair. And please let me know if you see any other potholes in your area. Because we just covered everything and we should not have any issue and I'm sure you guys have seen it and it's been patched. And hopefully, we are going after a grant to resurface the whole road. Right now, this is the best, you know, solution. Melissa, could you please go to the next one? Alright, next one is the Parking Enforcement Program. I just wanted to give you an update. We removed all the meters. Right now, we're in process and we're gonna have a kickoff call this Thursday. And hopefully, we're gonna have this app and Park Mobile App in the city to streamline it. For the resident community and whoever is visiting our city. So I will keep you guys posted regarding that one. And the last project that we have in this report is Chesapeake Bay Trust. That was completed in August and we finished three areas. And that was another hundred fifty thousand dollars from Chesapeake Bay and PG County. And that was another achievement. Melissa, next one, please. Cuz mayors keep looking at me and saying they're finished, please. Okay, the last one is the grant activities and I wanna let you know that. I really appreciate the team, especially the grand writer, Bill, by Striki, Melissa, everyone. We going after, you know, and if you see something, please say something, send it to us and we're gonna go after it. Because that's gonna help the city's budget, that's gonna help the city financial position and I do appreciate everyone. Thank you for listening to my report. If you have any question, I'll be glad to respond.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kamali. And I know it's not showing notice in that report is the fact that for any grant that we receive, the paperwork prior to it. Not just to apply, but to have the funds released or reimbursed and the final like audit information is massive. And we have been successful in not just obtaining grants, you know, utilize the grants. And um, be accountable for the grants that we done and this is the reason why more money seems to be flowing in. Alright, so I'm gonna go around council. If you have something to ask Mr. Kamali, ask him if not skip. Um, last thing I'm gonna say for Pots Hall, um, the unity was between a historic building. Which has like a thousand more requirements with a building that's been standing in the city for a while. So trying to marry basically, it was a lot of work to try to make sure you respect the, the historical. A historical building that's been here longer than the city has been established. So you get a sense of it and we're, we're a hundred fifteen years old. The building is even older than the city. That's how long it is. Alright, so I'm gonna go, um, Joseph, Jenny, Valerie, Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Kamali for that great presentation. I'm really good, glad to see the, uh, parking meters are going to be coming back online. I've talked to some business owners, uh, that were concerned about them being removed just because it doesn't have the turnover of vehicles. And so that, that'll be a really good upgrade too, to have the, then the mo- the mobile map. Um, my question was about the grants, um, two quick ones. One was, uh, more generally, what kind of grants are in the pipeline? In particular, are there any for electric vehicles? And then the more specific question was, uh, for the CBT, the Chesapeake Bay Trust permeable pavers. Um, when's the next round of funding for that, if there will be?
Okay, to answer your, your first question, which was, um.
What's in the pipeline?
Okay, you see the list, I have the list and I gave you the list of all the grants that right now we're working on. And these are the one that is ongoing. And then the next question, you said the electrical, um, I just wanna. I don't wanna announce it, but I have to wait, I have to wait because there is something.
Wait until we have it.
Yeah, yeah, I just, you know, I don't wanna be too specific, but there is a good.
Well, you can, you can just hit me up for the other question. Do you know when the next round of CBT grants will be for?
Okay, that one, unfortunately, unfortunately, we have been told that the county. The Prince George's County is putting pause on that for now. Yes, yes. And I'm talking to CBT and if there is any announcement, maybe they said next year. But right now, they don't have anything at this point. Because when we had the closeout of this project, they were there, the PG County people were there. And the people from CBT, unfortunately, they shared the news with me, then they told me that somehow the county. Is not going to support that one. Just pause it. It's not gonna go away, but right now it's in the pause status.
I will say we'll follow up with that one. Um, if there is state information, you can always email Mr. Kamali, um.
Yes, please.
He, he has all the dates on top of his head. Remember that. Alright, who was next? Sorry, I forgot what order I said. Who, who was it? We're gonna go Jenny, Valerie, Danielle?
It was Jenny, yeah.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Kamali for the presentation and congratulations on, uh, completing the audit on time. I know it's a big, uh, I know it's a lot of work. Um, and I'm gonna start bothering you again soon, but you've had a reprieve. Um, the, I, I'm curious, um, with Pots Hall, if we get the U and O next week. Um, fingers crossed, but if that happens, is there any reason that we couldn't have the next city council meeting? In person at Pots Hall that you know of?
Right now, getting the U N O is something totally, but moving over there, right now I got. The IT company that working on and we have to have the signals, we have to have a wifi, we're working on it right now. And when I have more information, I definitely share with you guys. And also be advised that right now, we're working on buying some new chairs, some new stuff over there. So it, it's not gonna happen.
Probably a, a month out at least.
I'm not gonna, you know, promise you because, look, there are some back orders. Like we've been working with Nauticon, Griffin, these are the company that working on the IT. And because everything from the City Hall has to be rerouted to the new council chamber. So somehow, like even last week, believe it or not, Jared was sick. He had to come back and make sure that, you know, they're doing something right. We, we are trying. Look, we wanna go over there as soon as possible. But I'm not gonna say that, you know, it's gonna happen next month. I wish I could do it next Friday. And, you know, let everybody know that we're going there. But we are hundred percent gonna be there soon, soon. And I will keep you guys posted because I, I just rely on the contractors. And right now, you know, anything could be postponed to that. I really, right now, it's been two weeks that I'm waiting for the sprinkler system, that it's only thirty five hundred dollars to be fixed. And they said Thursday or Friday this week, they're gonna come. Hopefully, they're gonna come. And so it just, you know, a lot of points that we have to connect and I appreciate everybody's, you know, patience.
Thank you for all your work on that. I have no further questions.
I will ask if we could keep the, the answers a little bit more precise. Alright, Jenny, did it answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Valerie?
Um, thank you, Mr. Kamali, and thank you for giving this, uh, detailed report. I really like having you speaking at the meetings, um, and giving us just a high level overview of kind of how things are going this week, last week. Next week kind of thing. Um, I think that helps the residents understand all the work that's happening, um, I think. And I think it, it contributes a lot to the, to the council meeting. Um, I, I think the grant activities are great. Um, I think the only question I have for you, and it's not in this report, it's not part of it. But like, when we did the Vision Zero Plan, um, I think there was a, a performance measure tracking system. That was like the last page of the report. Um, and, um, I think there was supposed to be like an annual report on the Vision Zero stuff. And so I know, I know everything is super busy and you're doing all the construction now.
It's already in the report that we are working on the annual and that's due by, uh, January twenty six. And I got tool design and myself, Bill, Ron Wilson, everybody's working on it. There should be, yes, there is an annual report that is due in January twenty six.
Yeah, I think that with some of them guys, it's like, you know, whether he's busy or not, he has to meet the deadline or the money goes away.
Exactly.
I think the money is spending on him giving the reports and making sure that he accounts for every single penny. So that's a good question, Valerie. I think it also brings clarity to like, you know, what, what else needs to be done with, with this one. I think sometimes we, um, you know, it's easy to, 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 um, to forget that. It, it, we're getting a lot of money in grants, but the work that goes associated with it, the team has to pull big, you know. So that question definitely reflects that, um, the different things like he has to do. And it's just that by a county, a city or federal level and they all have different requirements, more in depth at times than others. Danielle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kamali. Thank you so much for this report. Um, Jenny took my question, so I'm just gonna make a couple of comments. Um, the work that you've been doing on the sidewalks that have been going on out here, you know, my street was one of them. And the work that's been done, it, it, it did cause a little inconvenience for people, but I think that's just, you know, and it did for us. But it was well worth it. The twenty four hours we had to wait was well worth it. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing the final, the big one is Thirty Sixth Street over here on the west side. I can't wait to see the magic that's gonna happen over there with the impervious sidewalk where the trees are. I know that the residents over there are gonna be thrilled to be able to walk up and down the sidewalk and not, um, have to walk out in the street or trip or anything. So thank you very much for, uh, taking care of that and, uh, for answering Jenny's question about Pots Hall. That was my big one. So thank you very much.
Thank you, um, Mr. Kamali. Thank you and to the whole entire team. Aside from all the work that you do. You also are responsible for leading a wonderful team and that includes hiring like the best of the best to work with us. And I think that, um, that, um, has allowed us to do so many things. Um, when we first, you know, um, asked you to be our city manager, you knew I was very clear on what I needed. And not as we're on top of the list, cuz if we do not know where our money is going and where it needs to be, we cannot direct where we're going. The other thing heavily was go after grants to be able to subsidize because I do not, um, I told you, I don't wanna be the one that has to raise taxes. But we need to look elsewhere, um, in any way, shape or form to bring and you have been able, uh, to deliver that. And, um, and again, you could have had all the tools, but if you don't have the team to deliver, it wouldn't have done. The other thing, just to clarify, um, it was not your fault, it was due to the tariff that, uh, the flexible pavement. Uh, there was some delay on coming because I know you guys are very precise on what you guys need to follow through it. And I know the goal was to try to get everything ready for, um, Halloween. I do wanna thank also, um, through your leadership, you know, um, the contractor has been very good at answering the questions. And they make sure they remove every single tape so the streets were walkable. And they were not lifting it up until they have the flexible pavement ready so that would people walk on the, on the sidewalk. So thank you for that as well. And, um, overall, thank you, you know, I don't think I have any questions. Like, I, um, I think you addressed all the questions. The other thing is like for the, for the residents, uh, Mr. Kamali does submit a report to mayor council every other week. So we are up to, we are updated with the information that he gives us. So this is not like once a year report for, at least for us. We receive it and he's been open that if we have any questions, we followed through with it. Other than that, I think everybody's looking forward to moving into Pots Hall and figure out what we're gonna do with the building. You know, cuz we definitely wanna make sure that, um, we put it out to rent or decide what to do with it, to bring more funding. But I think the solar panels have been in key in making sure that, um, we continue to aim at the green initiatives. Because it's not just about expanding, but making sure on it. So the building be- being, um, so I, I wanna make sure that people are clear in that. The decisions that are taken with heavily like weighed on how potentially we move forward with a green, uh, vision as a city. Whereas the solar panels, whether it's a certification for the buildings, whether it's the gardens, whether it's the flexible pavement to protect our trees and so on and so on and so on. So, so those are decisions that we sometimes has to weigh in what possibly needs to be done in order to make sure that, um. We don't just get a sustainable Maryland. I'm happy to say we have the highest level, right? But make sure that we are true to who we are and that is heavily on your shoulders, Mr. Kamali, and we appreciate that. That, you know, we don't sleep much, but you definitely don't sleep more, a lot less than we do. Because if something happens, you, basically, we come to you and say what's going on. So thank you for that and, um, for the work that's being done. Okay? So I'll just leave it at that. I know you don't, you're very humble with many things, so thank you for that, Mr. Kamali, okay? Alright, I love you all, but we're gonna be moving to the next item and we're gonna be asking Mr. Kamali to give us the report on the legislative meetings. So that way like you'll see it a lot, a lot, maybe a lot smaller cuz it'll be a continuation of what we are. This was just one of like the first series of, uh, reports that he'll be joining us. So, um, for the legislative meetings, Mr. Kamali will be giving his city manager, um, report. But I think it's also important for the residents to realize that he does a lot of work, you know, um, in and outside the building. Um, and all over the city. Often you guys will see him walking around the city and, um, and, you know, he's checking that the sidewalks are working. That, you know, everything needs to be where it needs to be at and, and now I'm following, um, and having five bosses is never easy. So thank you for that, okay? So in saying that, I will move on to the next item, item number five. Presentation of building application for forty two, forty, oh, sorry, forty two, twenty one, thirty first street in Mount Rainier. The mayor council received a presentation from the owner of forty two, twenty one, thirty first street. And we have, uh, Director Ferrofino here with us. Hi, Alma, how are you? The floor is yours.
Good evening, city manager, mayor, council and everyone that has joined our meeting. Um, we are here today to do a presentation on actually a special, um, property. Um, as this property is on a combination property, which, um, it combines residential. And commercial neighborhood zoning. Um, I know that, I can't say much, but, um, we're doing remodeling. No structural, uh, being done and I know I have Ms. Kaylee Culp. Here to give us a rundown on what they're doing with the building.
Yes, hi. Thank you so much. Alma, is there, um, has the county get permits? I think I saw that permit in the package, correct?
Yes.
Any review design or anything we need to be aware before the presentation happens?
Nope, everything is fully, um, approved.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, um, Ms. Kaylee. Can you, um, how are you? Thank you for joining us today and we're looking forward to hearing, um, what plans you are, um, looking into when it comes to this property.
Thanks for having me. This is the third time I've been before the Mount Rainier City Council. And I think about a year and a half for a historic preservation project, but I think this is the one that I've been most excited about. Um, because of its very storied history, um, formerly known as Harry's Market. Which was part of a Jewish chain of grocery stores, um, in the Washington DC area. Um, it started around in the nineteen twenties and was a little corner store in the center of the neighborhood. And, um, attached to it is a set of apartments within, uh, Victorian. Where the former owners of the store lived and then over the years it kind of changed hands. Um, I'm gonna just share my screen so I can show you guys a few pictures if you're not familiar with, oh, it says sharing's not turned on. I can.
Give me one second. Um, Melissa, can you go ahead and, um, and give, uh, Kaylee, uh, the share capability? But just make sure you like share back when you're done, okay? Cuz we have problems in the past before. Thank you so much.
No worries. Okay, I'll try again in a second. Um, okay, it says in the host now. So yeah, this, this property, um, has been a non-conforming, single-family dwelling, um, by a couple. Who's been a mainstay of Mount Rainier for a long time. And thankfully, um, was maintained, um, well enough that there's no structural, uh, modifications that are required. And, um, so this is a picture of the facade on the thirty first street side of the property. Um, so we'll be doing some restoration. We're applying for, which I've done many times for Maryland Historical Trust tax credits. As well as National Park Service Historic Preservation Tax Credits. Um, so we'll be restoring the facade, um, and doing repairs. And then where we need to do replacements, we'll be replacing with, um, like materials. Um, so you can see here, this is the thirty first street side. It's a, um, was set up as a duplex on this side. And this is, um, just a little further out from the street. And then on the, this is like a, it's sort of like a flat iron piece of property where Rainier Avenue meets thirty first street. So this is a picture. So this is a picture of the existing historic store on the corner. Um, so our intention, because the store is owned commercial neighborhood, and the house is owned RSFA, which is residential, single-family attached, um, that we will be able to find a great uh, you know, quiet use commercial tenant that can sort of revitalize the spaces its intended use. Um, and there's a very cool uh, the, one of the only things that remains inside the store that is, that is original is the old walk-in cooler. Um, so that will remain even the things on the inside, anything that we can retain that would um, show its character, we'll keep. Um, so this is another shot of the elevation facing the corner of Rainier Avenue. And you can see the house, which is attached to the back. Um, and then this is another porch, which is the third residential unit entrance. And then these are just some pictures of kind of the condition of the porch and the stairs. Um, so we will be just um, basically making our shine from the exterior. And then in terms of interior alterations, um, just kind of reworking some of the floor plans, so that it's it's designed for modern living, um, and so it has logical flow for kitchens and baths and things like that. Yep. So that's pretty much the um, extent of the presentation. So if anyone knows of a great small business or independent operator that would be interested in occupying this adorable old Harry's Market store, please put them in touch with me, because um, it just would make such a great community gathering space, especially in this particular location in the heart of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So I'm gonna go through council to um, to see if they have any questions. Uh, Jenny, I'm I'm going to you first. It's so close to you.
Yeah, I was, I I live next door. Um.
Oh, hi. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. So I was a little surprised that I um, wasn't given a heads up. Um, I, um, there's no parking around there, or very little. So I'm I'm dubious about the likelihood of a commercial tenant, but I wish you luck in that regard. Um, and and unfortunately, there's nothing to be done about the parking situation. So, um, but I I agree, it could be a lovely community gathering space, um, as could many spaces on thirty fourth street that are currently empty. Um, but um, otherwise, I, how many apartments are you expecting?
Three.
A place to to have, like, like, how many tenants might might be living there?
So there's two two-bedroom spaces and one one-bedroom space.
Okay.
Okay, and be, thank you, Jenny, you're good?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, and before anything, my apology, Joseph, you have a big spiel to give, and my apology for not calling uh, not calling you first. Actually, I need to remember your your uh, the Luke Bryan's uh, spiel slash now Joseph. Go ahead.
Oh, um, I I I know I got to go first last time, so I didn't, it didn't bother me. I'm excited for your project. I also feel honored doing this tonight, since I saw council member, former council member Nedler was on. Um, uh, but anyway, I just wanted to remind you of a few local rules. Um, prior to this before, but so you can be a good neighbor throughout your project. And you probably heard what I will say from code enforcement, but we want to make sure you were aware. Um, first, we do have a noise ordinance, section ten dash one twenty one. So please limit construction activities to eight AM to eight PM to avoid violating it. Second, we do have a tree ordinance. It doesn't seem like you're gonna be touching it. But sec, if you do change your approach, uh, section twelve B dash seven, that protects private trees fifty six point five five inches or more in circumference, measured at four point five feet above the ground. If you plan on doing anything with a tree of that size, even if it's in bad condition, you must talk to code enforcement. You also need to make sure prunings are reviewed. Finally, take care, care should be given when taking, when digging, moving or grading soil to prevent stormwater from running into a neighbor's yard. And of course, whenever in doubt, call Alma.
Yes, and 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 I will say that if you do have, if you do start work prior or after, um, we'll be getting calls, and in this case, Jenny might be the first call that they'll make, followed by potentially me. And if we get calls, we are not happy if you violate the rule. And heavily, um, when in doubt, call Alma. You know, that that is like the golden rule. Um, considering you could have went ahead and read what we always tell everybody, whether to work or not. So if you're carrying something in, be aware that if there are trees and you're stepping on the roots, we, we love trees and they have rights in the city of Mount Rainier. You know, we're we're very, very loved, uh, very much in love with it. So I'm gonna go through uh, the rest of the council members. I just wanted to make sure we do that part. And uh, Joseph, remind me next time that you you go first and I'll go around, so that way you get in the spiel. Um, alright, Danielle and then Valerie.
Yes, um, thank, um, Mayor, do we wanna add time?
Motion, uh, can I have a motion to add time?
I'd like to make a motion to add, what, three minutes?
No, let's do, because that three minutes is gonna be just you. I'm gonna send you Valerie. Um, so let's uh, say five minutes.
I'll second it.
Danielle, can you do, you did five, you're good?
I did five.
Alright, uh, thank you, Joseph, for seconding. Any discussion? Objection, abstention, hearing none. Uh, we are adding five more minutes to the clock. Go ahead, Danielle.
Okay, um, thank you uh, for this presentation. Um, I know the uh, owners of it. I um, I'm also surprised. I didn't know that this uh, project was happening. Um, I I know about the parking situation around there, because I do hear a lot from the residents around there as well. So I'm interested to see um, the preservation of the building itself and uh, what um, actually ends up going in there. Um, but thank you very much for the presentation, and I do look forward to uh, keeping an eye on uh, the development.
Thank you.
Okay, Valerie?
Um, thank you. I I will, um, I think this is a good project. I think it'll be interesting to see what tenants come in. Um, but I do think you are not far from the food forest um, on thirty first street, and you're also not far from the community garden. So just keeping that in mind as you're looking at who might occupy the space. It's a kind of a, in the middle of two gardens that the city is participating in, so just keeping an eye on that, so. Yep.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, I will tell you that um, I per se was not aware that there is a thought of turn, of having a store in the corner. And I know the neighbors around those blocks are very outspoken. And it's been a residential home for many, 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 many years. It is um, and it might not still be like, you know, the equivalent of, you know. It might be deemed three apartments in a, in a, in an open space or whatever it is, right? So that that'd be some of the challenges, and when they said there's not enough parking, um, yeah, there there is not. There's barely enough parking for the, for the people that are are there currently. So that definitely will be a challenge in the fact that it's in the middle of, the middle of the middle of the city. It 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 definitely is, is a challenge, you know, if you could find ways to be able to do that. But um, you you have your work cut out. I look forward to seeing uh, the facelift to the, to the building. It it is a beautiful location. I'd be very fortunate, like many of us have, to be inside uh, that house, right? And check out um, how much of the old things, um, the historical things that were preserved. So the previous owners, uh, they did a good job preserving a lot of the stuff on it. So um, so it should be interesting, you know, um, to see what possibilities could could happen to be able to keep residents happy and be able to maximize the space, alright? Um, in saying that, um, thank you so much for being here, and that we look forward to figure out what the next steps are gonna be, okay? Um, Alma, is there anything else that we need to be aware or know?
No, Mayor. Um, everything is good to go. And I guess we'll just um, keep track of the construction. And like we said, any issues, we'll definitely hear about it. But I'm pretty sure um, Ms. Culp has worked in the city many times already, so she knows.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for preserving historical buildings. As you can tell, um, we spend a pretty penny uh, conserving our historical building. And so we're not far from um, loving historical buildings in the city. We're a historical city for a particular reason. So have a good night. You're welcome to continue joining us. If not, um, you're welcome also to go um, enjoy your day, okay?
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Alright, moving on to public comments. Uh, please see item, can you put the uh, page four, please, Melly? And guys, I'm suffering from allergies with this weather changing so much. It has been a bit of nightmare. Alright, so here are the rules for public comment. The mayor and city council invite and welcome comments of public meetings. The mayor presenting officers will recognize you. Please introduce yourself, first and last name for recording purpose, and give the name of the street and block number. IG forty three hundred block of thirty fourth street. Please indicate in the chat whether you'd like the mayor to read your comment or you will speak on your comment. If the mayor reads your comment, that will serve as you allocate a lot of speaking time. Public comment has a time limit of three minutes per speaker, unless otherwise agreed upon by the mayor. While speaking, please maintain a courteous tone, avoid personal attacks. If you wish to lodge a complaint about performance or conduct of a city employee, please bring your concerns to the attention of our city manager, who's Mr. Kamali, who will look into the matter and respond to you. The last paragraph, Melly. As a courtesy to other residents and business, the council requests that speakers not use specific addresses or names of individuals when describing a situation or making a complaint, noting that the block is preferred over a specific address. Okay, so public comment is now open. If you wish to speak and you happen to be with us online, lan, name, last name, um, block number, so thirty seven hundred block of thirty seventh street, okay? And let me know if you want me to read it or um, you wish to speak on it. In the meantime, anybody on Facebook, Jared? Okay, no comments on Facebook, and I don't see nothing on the chat neither. Okay. Okay, seeing that there's nothing, I'm gonna close public comment, alright, and it is eight o'clock. Um, for those that have been keeping track, it is election day. Eight o'clock is when most of the polls are closed. So I'm pretty sure we're all like aiming to see what happens all over the nation and even here in Maryland. Alright, um, and obviously, if you're standing in line, the rules change. You're still there. Alright, second reading and adoption ordinance, oh four dash twenty twenty five. The mayor council will have the second reading and adoption ordinance, oh four dash twenty twenty five. Repeat, uh, repealing the police advisory board. So can I have that document in front of us? Okay, uh, Valerie, can you help me with a read through? Because it's like a voting night.
Yes, um, City of Mount Rainier, Maryland, ordinance number zero four dash twenty twenty five, introduced by the mayor and city couns, council, amending the code of the city of Mount Rainier to repeal chapter four boards, committees and commissions, article three, police review and advisory board as no longer necessary for the protection of the public and an inefficient use of city resources. Whereas pursuant to uh, section five dash two oh two of the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland, the council of the city of Mount Rainier, the city, has the authority to adopt such ordinances as it deems necessary to protect the health, well, health, safety and welfare of the residents of the municipality. And whereas pursuant to five dash two oh two of the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland, this council of the city of Mount Rainier, uh, Maryland, the city council, has the authority to pass such ordinances as it deems necessary to assure the good government of the municipality, protect and preserve the municipality's rights, property and privileges, preserve uh, the peace and good order, secure persons and property from danger and destruction, and protect the health, uh, comfort and convenience of the residents of the municipality. And whereas in twenty twenty one, during a period of height and reckoning, with a history of oppression of people of color, which included a recognition of the historic patterns of abuse at the hands of public institutions, including law enforcement agencies, the city enacted ordinance number zero eight dash twenty twenty, uh, creating a police review and advisory board, the board, to support the city's efforts to ensure that all members of the public be treated fairly and courteously by its law enforcement officers to the maximum extent of practical, consistent with the department's law enforcement mission. And whereas the original mission of the board was to review the operations of the city's police department with respect to its uh, treatment of members of the public in connection with the pursuit of its mission and to investigate allegations of mistreatment and misconduct. And whereas the cre- creation of the city board demonstrated to state and county officials the importance of a police accountability to our residents, further pushing the need for change. And um, whereas subsequent to the adoption of chapter four, uh, title three and state legislature enacted the Maryland Police Accountability Act of twenty twenty one, repealing the law enforcement officer's bill of rights and implementing certain, certain police uh, reform measures, including strengthened protections for members of the public complaining of police misconduct and mistreatment. And among other things, uh, created the police accountability boards in each county. And whereas the Police Accountability Act preempted the city's authority with respect to the board in many respects, requiring the city to modify substantially the board's mission. And whereas the city enacted emergency ordinance number zero five dash twenty twenty two in order to ensure that the board complied with the limitations that stem from the Maryland Police Accountability Act of twenty twenty one. And whereas the city council expresses its appreciation to members of the board for their volunteer service. And whereas in the intervening years, it has become apparent that the board no longer serves the intended purpose as envisioned in twenty twenty, and the city council has determined that its resources can be better used, um, in other ways, to support the public interest in a safe, secure and civil society. Section one, now therefore be ordained and enacted by the council of the city of Mount Rainier, that city code, chapter four, boards, committees and commissions, article three, police review um, and advisory board shall here, shall be and hereby is repealed in its entirety. Section two, be it further ordained by the council of the city of Mount Rainier, that this ordinance is adopted by the council of the city of Mount Rainier this blank day of blank twenty twenty five and shall take effect on blank day of blank twenty twenty five. For provided that a fair summary has been read at the meeting, at which it was introduced and adopted, that a copy shall be posted at the city hall for at least two weeks after it becomes effective, and that a fair summary is published in at least one, at least once in a newspaper, having general circulation in the city, inclusive of the city's newsletter mailed or otherwise delivered to every city household. And further, provided that the mayor and council shall hold a public hearing, hearing on the ordinance at a meeting held not less than fourteen uh, days, more than forty five days after its adoption.
Okay, thank you so much. That is the second reading of ordinance oh four dash twenty twenty five. I'm gonna open it up to council first, okay? Alright, and so I'm gonna go, uh, Joseph, Danielle, Jenny, Valerie.
I've gone first a couple of times, Mayor.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Joseph. Alright, sorry, Joseph. We'll skip you around. Go ahead, Danielle, Jenny, Valerie, and then Joseph. We'll put you at the end, Joseph. Like, next two rounds, just for that.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, I um, still um, wish that um, the council and whoever submitted this would have given um, me as the uh, committee liaison and the members of the actual board some kind of heads up or um, or discussed it at least, or brought it up with them for, brought them in, talked to them or something before submitting this and uh, moving forward with it. Again, I agree that the way it was originally written is no longer um, it it no longer serves a purpose. But I still believe that there are good things that the uh, that this group of people or this committee could do in building and bridging trust and um, uh, well, trust and accountability and um, visibility with uh, between the community and the police department. And uh, I regret that um, that um, has not been shared um, by others. Um, but I do hope that in the future, as I think uh, council member Woodall mentioned in the uh, when uh, we did the first reading, that um, there's nothing prohibiting them from putting something together and bringing up a uh, a new version for us to consider. But I did want to uh, make my um, my uh, my opinions uh, on the record about this, so thank you.
Okay, Jenny?
Uh, thank you. Um, I think as I said last time, I I agree with uh, council member Carter that um, the members of the board should have been uh, given advance notice that this was going to be introduced. But um, I do agree that um, it should be repealed. I um, I feel there should be a general need for police accountability. But frankly, at the moment, um, I have no concern about the Mount Rainier Police Department and a lot of concern about um, other police departments that shall not be named. Um, but don't, uh, yes, d- do not report to Chief Perez. Um, so I I feel that um, the Mount Rainier Police Department does a good job of making itself uh, highly visible and um, giving the public lots of opportunities to interact with them in public and, well, relatively friendly spaces. And I look forward to um, Chief Perez developing perhaps even more. um Chief Perez developing perhaps even more opportunities for that public interaction. Um, but I think uh the time for P RAB is, is gone. Thank you.
Valerie?
Yep, thank you. Um, I have nothing uh more to add to this. Thank you.
Okay, Joseph? Joseph at the end?
Um, I, I did wanna say again that I, I did, I do think it was really important what this board did when it was founded, is pushing, pushing the state forward and the county forward to, to make changes. And, and yeah, and i- i- and in that way, it did serve a really great purpose, and having talked to some of the board members, um you know, one on, through email and one-on-one, um I think there is an understanding where, why we're at this point with the board. Um, but I do, I am glad to see Chief Perez and the police officers out the community and know that that was an important thing that um several of the board members talked to me about was the, the engagement. So, we need to keep that going to make sure folks feel comfortable around the Mount Rainier Police, and I'll, I am done. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you so much, you guys. All right, uh, I, I think you guys covered everything. And in the essence of time, I'm gonna open out the community, it is eight ten. Okay, and uh, uh Millie, how much time do we have in the clock right now? Think it's not like time running out, so we could add more time. What was it, Melissa? Three minutes, and now we probably have one. Can I have a motion on the floor to have five minutes?
I'll uh motion to add five minutes.
I just need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Jenny, for seconding. Guys, if I make the motion, just second. All right, any discussion? Objection, abstention, hearing none. We're gonna add five um, five more minutes to the clock, okay? Right, um, I have, um, Tony George, uh would like to speak um be, uh regarding the police uh review advisory board. Go ahead, Tony.
Thank you, um, Tony George, thirty-three hundred block of Rhode Island Avenue. Um, I, I'm sad to see that this is happening. I think um we were kinda doomed when, I think we did serve a purpose, and when we tried to do community outreach, we were stopped and told that it didn't fall under the ordinance and that they, you all would seek counsel from the uh city's attorney, and that was the, the, the story we were told over a two-year period, and we, we've yet to ever get feedback from the attorney, the city's attorney via the city manager regarding um what, what's, what was allowed and not. The other issue is, as an independent body, um, you know, funding was restricted and, and we were not allowed to, to use it. We, there were opportunities or um, times when we attempted to speak publicly about concerns and we were shut down. I think it was, this, this committee was, this board was doomed when we initially spoke out about the uh status or the breakdown in the contract negotiations uh with the uh fraternal order, order of F O P for the city. And just concerns we had in terms of the uh chief uh kind of being handcuffed and not having full say or control over uh input on operations and, and uh things that uh concerned the police department. Um, so um, I don't think it was a good faith effort on the city's part to uh have this, this police review advisory board. And um in the past, when we reached out, and even most recently, when a letter was sent to the uh mayor and council, there's been no response. So when you're saying you, you talked to the P RAB members or board members, um, I, I had, I've had no conversation with any council member. Um, so, and if you took the time to read the correspondence that was sent, um, I think it did merit a response and some, some comment and feedback. So it's not about the visibility of the police department. I don't think that's ever been the issue, but there were some cons- legitimate concerns that we did address, and I think us speaking out was to our detriment. However, um, you know, the, the contract did move forward and things, some issues were addressed. Um, but I, again, I think it's unfortunate, and again, in terms of this cu- these current council members, we I've not gotten any feedback as chair of the, the committee and any response to any correspondence that was shared with the, the council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so I wanna make sure that uh we're on the same page with certain things. The police advisory board was brought up in at least one or two different meetings in front of mayor council from the former council, um, including who, uh, the person that was the liaison for it. So it's not like we're discussing anything. It's like to clarify, when the state law changed, you know, it ripped every, basically every power that the police advisory board was supposed to have, so minimized the work that uh we could, um, that board could potentially, could have done. And when the city pushed back on certain things, because like legally, we couldn't do certain things. It was out of our jurisdiction, um, the police advisory board. It is um powered by the county. And that's who um reports, uh, who the officers reported, you know, so it's not even the city. So, um, there was no way that even if there was a complaint for it to come to us and for it to have any teeth. Um, and I think that in the fairness of uh to our city manager and also police department, we were not gonna make them have a stop here underway to what needed to be an investigation or anything else, right? So that's one. Number two, the board was not designed to advocate for the F O P. That's, that wasn't what it was designed to do. It was assigned to, uh, listen to the concerns that the residents have. And that's the other thing that, you know, when, when repeated things are being brought up to us and we, um, and it's not of the function of the committee, it limits the stuff that we can do. So I wanna make sure that we're a little bit clear on it, you know, um, um, we have been very clear, and as council, like any F O P discussions, uh, we have a negotiating team that deals with it, and as a matter of fact, none of the elected officials sit in that team, not one. And that's been going on for, I wouldn't say four councils back? And that's the agreement that was made, so that way the city team deals, um, you know, has the conversation when it comes to them, to the F O P, the team is led, you know, by obviously our city manager, you know, attorney and so on, right? Now the council, so when certain things are brought up to us, we um, we have established a rule that we will not interfere with it. Right? So it puts us in a position where it's not that we don't wanna talk about it, it's like we have agreed not to. And then we'll be in violation of like um fair agreement. To have a discussion about it like in public when it's not supposed to be, and I think people have conversations. They um, they discuss whatever they're gonna discuss, and I'll tell you this. A thirty-three, thirty-three, as Mr. Kamali, thirty-three percent increase um for our officers is not ch- change. It's quite a bit, so I just wanna make sure that um we're also clear on what it is and what it is, and then why so that certain things couldn't be discussed. And time has run out, so I'm gonna move on. Um, I'm gonna ask Melissa, and actually, I'm gonna ask council for um to, uh, can I have a motion for two minutes on the clock so we could take a vote on this?
So moved.
It's probably moved and second, any discussion? All right, objection, abstention, hearing none. We're adding two minutes on the clock. Can I have a motion on the floor? To approve ordinance oh four dash twenty twenty-five, amending the code of the City of Mount Rainier to repeal chapter four boards, committees, commissions, article three, police review and advisory board, as no longer necessary for the protection of the public and and inefficient use of city resources. There's a motion clearly in the floor, can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, it's probably moved and second. Any discussion? Any objections? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay, the motion carries four, zero, one. Okay, so it passes uh to the members of the uh police review advisory board. Thank you for your service. Uh, we do appreciate the work um that you guys did, although like all of our hands were tied and you know, once the, once it changes, but thank you guys so much um for your work, okay? All right, moving on to item number eight. And by the way, some of you guys are following the election. My phone is like blinking everywhere. There's a projected winner already in Virginia, just so you know. It's like everywhere. My phone hasn't stopped moving. All right. Okay, uh, resolution oh nine dash twenty twenty-five, the mayor and council will have the second reading of adoption resolution oh nine dash twenty twenty-five. FY twenty seven, twenty twenty-seven budget calendar. Uh, while Melissa puts it in the screen, it is customary for us to start discussing the budget calendar, so that way we give plenty of time to residents to be involved in the budget process. Um, you know, it's not common. Most cities do not discuss it or even talk about it until like months closer, we decide to like approve it and, and have it in our, in our calendars and everywhere else, right? So Valerie, can you go ahead and read the, the resolution, please? And this is a voting item for tonight.
Yes, thank you. Um, City of Mount Rainier, Maryland, resolution number zero nine dash twenty twenty-five, introduced by the mayor and city council. A resolution setting the proposed bud- budget calendar for the fiscal year twenty twenty-seven budget. Whereas the city council is required to adopt a budget outlining city revenues and expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, which begins July one, twenty twenty-six, and ends Ju- June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. And whereas the adopted budget must constitute a complete financial plan for the upcoming fiscal year, includes estimates in, of anticipated revenues and proposed expenditures. And whereas pursuant to the char- charter section seven oh two, a proposed budget for the next fiscal year must be submitted to the mayor and city council no later than March thirty-one of each year. And whereas the final deadline for adoption of the fiscal year um twenty twenty-seven budget by the city council is June thirty, twenty twenty-six. And whereas the budget development process is extensive and requires significant planning, coordination, and transparency. And whereas it is essential to ensure public awareness of the proposed budget, conduct a public hearing um and provide opportunities for community review and input prior to a final adoption of the budget ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Mount Rainier, Maryland, that the following calen- calendar of events is hereby adopted for the preparation and adoption of the City of Mount Rainier budget for fiscal year F Y twenty twenty-seven. Um, Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, city council work session to discuss the proposed uh F Y twenty twenty-seven budget calendar. Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty-five, first reading of resolution setting the proposed um F Y twenty twenty-seven budget calendar. Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five, second reading and adoption and second reading and adoption of resolution setting the F Y twenty twenty-seven budget calendar. Thursday, November sixth, twenty twenty-five, the city manager will issue budget instructions to all city departments, committees, and community groups. Wednesday, December thirty-first, deadline for all budget requests from city departments, committees, and community groups to be submitted to the city manager. Friday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-six, the city manager submits, submits the proposed F Y twenty twenty-seven budget to the city coun- council. Um, Tuesday, at February seventeenth, twenty twenty-six, city manager presents the proposed F Y twenty twenty-seven budget to the city council. City council holds a work session and discusses the proposed tax rate. Uh, Thursday, March fifth, twenty twenty-six, if necessary, publish notice in Prince George's Post or, and or the Sentinel uh regarding the public hearing scheduled for March twenty-one, twenty twenty-six, constant yield rate is posted and published. Saturday, March twenty-one, twenty twenty-six, one, public hearing and public comment on the proposed F Y twenty-seven budget. Uh, two, city council work session immediate fol- immediately following the hearing. Tuesday, April seventh, twenty twenty-six, one, discussion of proposed F Y twenty twenty-seven budget and first reading of the F Y twenty twenty-seven budget ordinance, two, public hearing on proposed F Y twenty twenty-seven budget. Tuesday, April twenty-one, twenty twenty-six, second reading of F Y twenty twenty-seven budget ordinance and possible vote. Tuesday, May fifth, twenty twenty-six, if needed, vote on F Y twenty twenty-seven budget ordinance. Tuesday, June tw- second, twenty twenty-six, if needed, vote on F Y twenty twenty-seven budget um ordinance and number two, budget calendar for the preparation and adoption of the City of Mount Rainier F Y twenty twenty-seven may be amended or adjusted by the city council as necessary.
Okay, thank you so much, Valerie. Uh, this is the second reading, so you guys have had opportunity to see this document for, I believe, what, two months minimum, right, to give your feedback, input. Uh, we did work. Thank you, Melissa, for making sure that we double-checked the dates, um. And it looks fine uh for the public. If there's a date change, we will notify, you know, if an emergency happens, right? And there's a change, but usually we stick, um, we stick to the date because um it's very technical days and how we have to publish the information and so on and so on. All right. Council, I'm gonna call upon you. Let me know if you have a comment or if you're gonna be, or you're okay to move on. Um, it is almost eight thirty, all right? I'm gonna go with Danielle. Joseph, you're going at the end.
Nope, I'm good.
All right, uh Jenny?
I'm good, thanks.
Valerie?
Thank you.
Joseph?
I'm good, thanks.
All right, Joseph, you're up to be number one again, okay? Just by luck. Uh, all right, so I have nothing as well, and I don't see nothing in the chat for a question or anything that has to do with anything. All right, motion on floor to uh approve resolution oh nine dash twenty twenty-five. The resolution stating the proposed budget calendar for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven budget.
A second.
It's probably moved and second, any discussion? Objection? Abstention, hearing none. This beautiful document has passed. I'm sure Mr. Kamali, Melissa are happy because after we pass it, it heavily carries on them to follow through every step all the way, and they have done a beautiful job at that. All right, moving on to next item. Uh, proclamation for municipal government month work. Um, every year, like clockwork, the month of November is designated as municipal government work. The City of Mount Rainier has been a banner city for several years, right? Unfortunately, we lost it for a little bit, and then me and uh Mayor Miles at that time fought to get it back. And part of the things that I say is like I will never lose it again, you know, so we're making every effort as much as we can. So here's the proclamation. Along with that, if you guys have gone outside our city hall, you will see the fly from municipal government work is already flown. And our communications team is gonna be posting um at least one social media post a week with hashtag M W, M G W um month. And it's part of what all the various cities do to be contenders for banner city. And you have it right here in front of you. Valerie, you wanna take a, you wanna take a read?
Declaration declaring November as municipal government works month in the City of Mount Rainier. Whereas since nineteen ninety-three, Maryland towns, cities, villages, and local municipal governments have celebrated municipal government works month to promote the value of local government, and whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government with residents having direct access to their elec- elected officials, and in the City of Mount Rainier, being able to elect their representatives in municipal elections as early as the age sixteen and through residential voting. And um whereas municipalities enhance the quality of life for their residents by providing various services tailored to the particular needs and desires of the community, and whereas the City of Mount Rainier maintains municipal facilities, streets and sidewalks, creates ADA ramps for accessibility and safer passages to schools, provides green spaces for the community to enjoy, co- collects trash, compost, and recycling, um, clears snow in the winter and leaves in the fall, manages rain gardens and city trees, protects tenants through rent stabilization and other laws, celebrates the diversity of our community, hosts activities and events, fosters economic development, invests in public art and educational scholarships, and through dedicated staff maintains full-service police, public works, code enforcement, economic development, finance, human resources, and administrative departments, and whereas in, in effort to educate residents about municipal government and the importance of active informed, active and informed participation, the City of Mount Rainier is proud to promote municipal government, government awareness. And whereas um municipalities help make Maryland a great place to live, work, play, play, and explore. Now therefore, I Selena Benitez, mayor of
I'll read the final paragraph. Thank you, Valerie. Now therefore, I Selena Arbenitas, mayor of the City of Mount Rainier, Maryland, do hereby adjoint the hundred sixty-one local governments members of Maryland Municipal League in proclaiming November twenty twenty-five to be municipal government works month in the City of Mount Rainier. Dated today, um, the fourth day of November twenty twenty-five. This beautiful document will be attached to um, along with the city website, it'll be attached to a package that is submitted yearly uh to make sure we've done our part, and you know, ma- basically the, the sense of it is um why living in a municipality is important and the benefits you get out of being um in, in a municipality compared to um unincorporated areas. So you heard a couple of the great things the City of Mount Rainier does, and if I put everything they, our, our staff does, forget it, that report will be longer than Mr. Kamali's. All right, right, Mr. Kamali? I, I put the big heads, Mr. Kamali. Thank you so much for that. Um, duh 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 duh, I thought it was, oh, that's on their new business. Board approval of minutes, American council won approval of the minutes for September sixteen work session, October seventh, twenty twenty-five legislative meeting. This is a vote. You guys have had This is a vote. You guys have had minutes like forever in a day. Can I have a motion of floor to approve the minutes that uh originally presented?
I'll make the motion.
All right, can I have a second?
To approve the minutes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Probably if I second, any discussion? Objection, abstention, hearing none. The minutes have been approved as originally presented. All right, new business, first reading of ordinance oh five dash twenty twenty five. Mary Castle will have the first reading ordinance oh five dash twenty twenty five in order to codify the Mount Rainier Green Team and disbanding the Mount Rainier Environmental Protection Board, a board that we have not um fulfill. I think, Joseph, you said you were in the last group, what, over ten years ago? All right, so um we did review, we did have brought this to the work session, so it's right now here. It is uh first reading, correct? So there is no vote on this item. All right, Joseph, you wanna do the pleasure of uh reading this beautiful document?
Certainly, Mayor. Um so I'm reading ordinance uh number five dash twenty twenty five and ordinance codifying the Mount Rainier Green Team and disbanding the Mount Rainier Environmental Protection Board. Whereas pursuant to section five dash two oh two of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, the Council of the City of Mount Rainier, the city has the authority to adopt such ordinances as it deems necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the municipality. And whereas pursuant to section five dash two oh two of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, the Council of the City of Mount Rainier, uh oh wait, there's something got messed up here. It's um anyway, um has the authority that we need to fix that, has the ability to pass such ordinances that deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality, protect and preserve the municipality's rights, property and privileges, preserve peace and good order, secure persons and property from danger and destruction, and pro- protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the residents of the municipality. And whereas the city council adopted Resolution nine dash two thousand and seven founding the Environmental Protection Board to provide an efficient and integrated environmental protection system for the city of Mount Rainier laying a leveling strategic goals and specifically to conduct a greenhouse gas assessment, strive to meet or exceed Kyoto Protocol goals as a city, and develop a biodiversity plan for the city of Mount Rainier. And whereas the city council adopted Resolution six dash twenty twelve founding the Green Team made up of members of the Mount Rainier Business Association, the Tool Shed, the Bike Co-op, the Tree Commission, the Design Review Board, the Mixed Use Town Center Review Committee, now the Legacy Mixed Use Town Center Committee, the Environmental Protection Board, and other residents in order to collaborate on the implementation of green initiatives in the city of Mount Rainier. And whereas the Green Team had taken on many of the additional responsibilities of the Environmental Protection Board, the Environmental Protection Board has ceased to meet as an independent body. And whereas the existence of an active Green Team is necessary to be certified Sustainable Maryland through the Sustainable Maryland Certification Program. And whereas the planet continues to face environmental crises from climate change, biodiversity and habitat loss, proliferation of plastics, among others. And whereas the residents who served on the Environmental Protection Board are thanked for their service to the city of Mount Rainier for their work in making the city a more sustainable, biodiverse community to act on the climate crisis. And section one, now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the mayor and council of the city of Mount Rainier, Maryland, that chapter four boards, committees, and commissions of the Code of Ordinances shall be and hereby is amended to add Title Four Green Team to read as follows. Section four dash four hundred, establishment of the Green Team. A, the Mount Rainier Green Team is established to one, convene representatives of other city commissions, city staff, residents, business owners, and other interested parties to prepare for submissions to the Sustainable Maryland Certification Program. Two, foster community engagement in issues of sustainability. And three, advise the city council on issues of sustainability, including but not limited to biodiversity, beautification, climate mitigation, resiliency. B, each fiscal year, the city manager's proposed budget shall include funding for the team's operations or for payment. Oh, there's a typo there of artist commission that can create works of art for public enjoyment. Um from whether, and that'll have to be fixed as well in amendment. Section four dash four oh one, composition and structure of the Green Team. The team should be composed of five members who are appointed by the mayor and council. B, the term of the team membership is two years, except they shall serve until his or her successor is appointed. C, team members may be reappointed for consecutive terms. D, the city council may remove members of the team only for cause as defined in this title. E, all members of the board shall be residents of the city. F, if a team member ceases to be a resident of the city, they shall no longer be eligible to serve on the amendment of uh on the team and the position shall remain vacant until a new member is appointed to complete the term of the member formerly holding the position. G, a quorum of at least three team members is required to conduct team business. H, the team shall elect from its members a chairperson, secretary, and such other officers that shall deem necessary. The chairperson shall convene and preside over meetings of the team. The secretary shall keep minutes of the team's business. Second, four dash four oh two, duties of the Green Team. A, in order to fill its purpose established in four dash four hundred A, the Green Team, one, shall annually convene representatives of other city commissions, staff, residents, business owners, and other interested parties to prepare for submissions to Sustainable Maryland Certification Program. Two, shall meet regularly with all meetings open to the public and subject to the Maryland Open Meeting Act. Three, shall review the proposed budget of the city of Mount Rainier to provide uh recommendations on how to budget achieve sustainability goals. Four, may hold events open to the public to foster community engagement on issues of sustainability. Five, provide recommendations on policies and procedures to the mayor and council on issues of sustainability. And six, undertake the responsibilities specified in section twelve dash C dash twelve C dash one of the city code. Section two, be further ordained that the Environmental Protection Board established through Resolution nine dash two thousand and seven be formally dissolved. Section three, the ordinance is adopted by the mayor and council of the city of Mount Rainier, this blank, and shall take effect on blank, provided that a fair summary has been read at the meeting at which it was introduced. And at a and at the meeting at which it was has been acted upon, that a copy shall be posted at city hall immediately after introduction until it is acted upon and for at least two weeks after it has become effective, that a fair summary is published at at least once in a newspaper, having general circulation in the city, inclusive of the city's newsletter mailed or otherwise delivered to every city household.
Thank you, Joseph. I'm I'm gonna make one suggestion that I just realized, this is the reason why we're really allowed. Um the section where it says that uh the Green Team will convene the other committees, I think that we need to um edit it to they will work with the city manager of their designate to convene the other committees, because a committee cannot come formally convene the other one, it has to go through the city manager to be able to bring them together, or the designate in this case. Okay, so that that'll be my, that one if, and I know that we have been working on resolutions that are reading he or she that they will read they, so that was like a neutral um mutual language to be a little bit more inclusive. So that those will be my two. And then the other ones you mentioned, because it's just the first reading, and if you're like um tagged it that there has to be changed, like you were doing as you were reading, just sub- just submit the changes and on the next um on the next one, just highlight what what changes were made, okay? So when they read like they'll be, they'll be adjusted, all right? Okay, so council, um Council member Jakuda read um the wonderful resolution that he wrote. And it reminds me as well that I need to write resolutions that are smaller, because there's a lot of, a lot of reading going on, all right? I'm horrible at it, I admit to this. All right, so um I'm gonna go around the room. If you have any feedback, um let me know. If not, this is the first reading, it's not a voting item. And so I'm gonna go Valerie.
Thank you. I was not at the work session when this was introduced by uh read through it, and it looks pretty good. And I agree, uh making it they instead of he and she is is a good suggestion. So other than that, I think this is good. Thank you.
All right, Danielle, Jenny?
Um thank you, Joseph, for your work on this. Um I trust your judgment and your decisions on these, so I support it a hundred percent.
Jenny?
I have no additional comments. Thanks.
Okay. All right, Joseph, that's that's a pretty, pretty good resolution. Thank you for helping us um organize a lot of things that we've been doing uh with the city. Has heavily been to make sure that our committees have resolutions attached to it with at least some guidelines. And if something is not um is not activated to also deactivate it to make sure we 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 clean and organize as we go along. So I think this resolution uh manages to do a lot of the things uh that um one, connect us to the green vision that we have. You know, make sure that we know what clearly uh people are signing up when it comes to like the Green Team. But also like, you know, resolving the problem for a community that has not been active in forever. Yes, you know, honestly, I remember like when you brought up to me, I said like, Joseph, I don't, I've never heard from it, I don't even know who the members are. So it was a surprise when you said I was one of the last members and Mary Lee as well. So like, okay, makes sense, you guys will be like members, but in reality, it hasn't been around for for the long and it and it basically like morph into the Green Team, right? I think this was a lot for us as we are recruiting for members, for them to know what is that that you know, one, at the end of the day, we want people that wanna volunteer and and know that green initiatives are very, very important and turn the sustainable report i- is is very key, you know, and we have to be the biggest advocates when it comes to um green initiatives, especially in current times, right? I see nothing on the chat. Anything on Facebook? Okay, hearing none on both. Uh Joseph, thank you so much for bringing this and putting it together and um we could make the the minor edit share with the collective and we should be ready for uh the next legislative meeting uh for it to be uh second reading and vote, okay? Good, all right, perfect. All right, and this is a perfect example of not doing small res- no, small documents, right? Hmm, okay, proclamation from Human Rights Day. Uh this is America's official proclamation for Human Rights Day on December ten. So although it's for December ten, I want you guys to at least like look at it, or read through it, and it's gonna be turned into a resolution. So at least you have seen it, read it, and when we uh publish it, when I, you know, in December, you guys have gotten a sense of it, so you will see in this in the next work session. Basically, the same document, just in resolution format. So this will uh technically kill two birds with one stone, make you guys aware what the reading is, and uh get it ready for work sessions so you at least have seen it more than once, okay? All right, so um Valerie, you wanna help me?
Uh yes.
Valerie, it's like, no.
Proclamation declaring that December tenth is Human Rights Day in the city of Mount Rainier. Whereas on December tenth nineteen forty-eight, the United Nations General Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, establishing universal rights and freedom for all people, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, language, political political opinion, national origin, or other status. And whereas the declaration establishes multiple rights such as freedom, equal dignity, freedom of movement, peace, and the overall worth of every human being. And whereas December is Human Rights Month and brings awareness to continuing to continue protecting our residents from discrimination, a cornerstone of our city's legal framework. And whereas the United States has ratified and is bound by the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights done on June one nineteen ninety-two and the International Convention on Elimination of All Forms of Racial Discrimination done on uh September twenty-nine nineteen ninety-four, and the Convention Against Torture and Other Cruel Inhuman Inhumane or uh degrading treatment of pu- or punishment done on September nineteenth nineteen ninety-four. And whereas treaties ratified by the United States should be upheld at the federal, state, and municipal government as they are considered supreme law of the land under clause two, article uh six of the United States Constitution. And whereas uh the United States has signed in pursuit to Article eighteen of the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties is obligated to refrain from acts that would defeat the object um and purpose of the International Covenant on Economic, Social, and Cultural Rights, signed on October five nineteen ninety-seven. The Convention of the On the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women, signed on July seventeenth nineteen eighty. The Convention on the Rights of Child uh on the Rights of the Child, signed on February sixteenth nineteen ninety-five. And the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, signed on July thirtieth two thousand nine. And whereas human rights are universable, universal and and divisible, and they transcend national and local po- boundaries, and governments at every level share responsibility for ensuring that these rights are upheld in law, policy, and practice. And whereas all levels of government are obligated to prevent, rather than empower, discrimination and violence at the hands of non-state actors. And whereas state and municipal governments play an important role in ensuring that the United States complies with its treaty obligations. And whereas the city of Mount Rainier has implemented policies and issued resolutions that uphold, protect and defend the human rights of city residents, including uh declaring reproductive rights are human rights, as well as inclusionary law to protect our community and granting the right uh to vote for non-citizens on municipal elections. And whereas the state of Maryland um protects the fundamental human rights, including the right to health, nondiscrimination, life, privacy, freedom of movement, freedom from cruel and inhumane treatment, and many others. Whereas the mass uh and illegal detention, ki- kidnapping, dehumanization, and deportation suspends the human rights of migrants who are fundamental members of our community and this nation, the systematic systemic injustices um of the criminal legal system, including the practice of forced prison later labor and extreme sentences as such as death by incarceration, water injustices as as a manifestation of environmental racism, racism, the expansion of the terrorism framework um and that surveillance infrastructure used to re- repress expression, U S complicity in advancing violations of domestic and international law, the regression um reproductive rights and bodily autonomy, and the criminalization of homelessness and poverty are all examples of grave human rights violations. And whereas building legal frameworks rooted in human rights principles at the local and state level is essential to ensuring access to healthcare, preventing discrimination, and safeguarding the lives and dignity of all people, especially amid ongoing federal attacks. And whereas on August twenty-seven twenty twenty-five, in an attempt to evade accountability for grave ongoing human rights violations in the country, the U S State Department sent a letter to the Office of the High Commissioner on Human Rights, stating that the administration will not participate in its upcoming universal uh periodic review, a mandatory review process with through which countries review each other's humans' right, humans' rights records. And whereas every UN member uh country participates in the universal period review process. And to date, only two other countries have attempted, have ever attempted to evade review, and no country has ever fully done so. And whereas a government that silences accountability while expanding repression cannot be ignored and must be held accountable on a global stage. And whereas the United States is a signatory to the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and has ratified it and has ratified three human rights trees which have legal authority. And whereas on June twenty-four, uh twenty twenty-two, the United States Supreme Court in Dobbs v. Jackson's Women's Health organization overturned nearly fifty years of precedent, established under Roe v. Wade and Planned Parenthood v. Casey, eliminating the federal constitutional right to abortion in the United States and resulting in widespread restrictions and bans that have forced thousands of people to travel across state lines to state obtain essential healthcare. And whereas in the first two years since the Dobbs decision, state prosecutors across the nation have initiated at least four hundred and twelve cases charging pregnant people with crimes related to pregnancy, pregnancy loss, or birth. And more than three-quarters of the people charged were low-income individuals, and two hundred, in two hundred and sixty-four of these cases, information supporting criminal prosecution was obtained in or disclosed in a medical setting. And whereas uh marginalized communities, including indigenous, black, and brown people, immigrants, L G B T Q I A plus individuals, um people with disabilities and those living in poverty or rural areas bear a dispar- disproportionate burden of abortion restrictions and criminalization, reflecting systemic inequ- inequities within both health and legal systems. And whereas on June twenty-four twenty twenty-five, the city of Mount Rainier became the first in the county to pass a resolution declaring that reproductive rights are human rights and abortion is a human right. And whereas December ten of each year is celebrated around the world as Human Rights Day and now therefore be it resolved that the city of Mount Rainier aligns itself with human rights obligations under the uni- Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the the International co- Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, the International Con- Convention of on the Elimination of All Forms of Racial Discrimination and Convention Against Torture and Other Cruel Inhumane or Degrading Treatment or Punishment in accordance with Article Six, Clause Two of the United States Constitution, and stands in solidarity with local, national, and inter- international efforts to protect and expand human rights for all and
and be further resolved that Iceland Arbenitas do by recognize December ten twenty twenty-five as Human Rights Day in the city of Mount Rainier and commit to uphold freedom, democracy, and human rights in our own city, in our country, and around the world. And um this is the document, the original one is um will be signed by me, all right? So that's the proclamation, and I will practice what I preach. I need to work on making it less wordy. But some of these documents, as much as I tried to cut them off, it's a lot going on in the world, you guys. Okay, moving on to the next item. Moving on to the next item, presentation is amended. The city clerk will present the October twenty first work session minutes to the mayor and council, they are in your package. Um this is just a presentation about a moving, uh moving on this item. And item number fourteen, adjournment, can I have a motion in the floor to, to adjourn?
So moved.
Again.
I always think it's funny, like you guys take forever to adjourn, after a long meeting. Alright, so we have a uh motion in a second, any discussion? Objection, abstentions, hearing none, this meeting comes to an end at eight forty nine P M, thank you guys so much. And um to our community members, thank you for showing up to all of our events and being as wonderful as you guys are, I mean, it's um. Words can as friends, I thankful I am for standing up for um plenty of human rights and being the light of beacon when we definitely need it, so. And doing that, staff, we couldn't do this without you, thank you so much, and we're hanging out because you guys need to home, go home and rest, alright? Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you staff, good night.
Night everyone.
Good night everyone.